I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Kathy, you ready to do roll call?
I am.
All right.
Mayor McGowan.
Here.
Tom Hastings.
Here.
John Glondo.
Here.
Russon Weaver.
Here.
Stephen Harfer.
Present.
Mickey Holes.
Here.
Beth Williams.
Here.
Kim Ratliff.
Here.
So we're down to approval of the meeting agenda. Do you have something you want to talk to us about? Is there, what's about the connector or something? Is that why you're here?
I'm here actually for the tax, for the... So, the lodging tax committee reviewed two different lodging tax applications. And so, I would assume that that would have come under committee reports. And Paula is the transportation manager for Hope Source, which was one of the applications.
So is that, okay, all right. Just wanted to make sure what we're gonna do. Okay, um, do I have a motion to approve the meeting agendas presented?
She'll move.
I'm sorry. I'm wondering if they have a particular thing if they're waiting until the end of the agenda, if we might look at that as courtesy.
I was gonna ask if we could, could you amend, would, Mr. Motioner, would you amend your motion so that we could put our committee report at the beginning of the, of the meeting under, before the office of the...
Before office of the...
Before office of the... So amend the committee reports.
The second is... Which the, the committee report?
Lodging tax.
Lodging tax. Okay. Just lodging tax or all committee reports?
Just the lodging.
Just the lodging. Okay, we can do this.
We got a cemetery.
Okay, so the, the motion was to amend the meeting to allow the lodging tax committee report to be put right after the consent agenda. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So, under announcements and that sort of stuff, I do have a note from our attorney and a vertical bridge has agreed to stay their appeal pending investigation of other sites. At this point, there is really nothing else we have to do. They still, they made the appeal, they, they're gonna go look at other sites. We still have our rights, they still have their rights, but in the meantime, it's, uh, it's on a stake. So just last meeting, I told you guys about that. So I just was gonna tell you.
Just to comment, just to comment, as an admonition, we're still, we still should not discuss it with any members of the public.
Yes, that's right, that's right. Yeah, that's right, so we still, you know, stay out of it. It's still...
Cause a division.
Yes. Okay, how about the consent agenda?
Move that we...
Oops, whatever you get.
Now, now some announcements.
Oh, yes. I'm jumping away then. Okay. There is another one under there, it's not just you two. So Coleman Miller from DOE has something for us.
I do. So, thank you, Mayor. This is kind of old hat, so maybe it's not a big deal, but it's a big deal for us. I think it was a couple of years ago, we were here doing the 10-year award, so this is even more. Twelve or something, twelve in a row, I think. That might be wrong, but, um, this is the Outstanding Performance Award for the Upper Kedetas County Regional Waste Water Treatment Facility for the city of Clayellum. So I'm from the Department of Ecology. The Department of Ecology is charged with enforcing and regulating the laws of the Clean Water Act. So this is water, this, regulations that keep our waters clean and protect, protected from pollutants. And so, it's very important, important laws, we, as Washingtonians, we like our clean water and like the rivers to be clean and all the way from the top up here and the upper basins all the way down to the Puget Sound and the, and the ocean, you know, we, we need to keep track and, and keep our waterways clean. And, and so our, um, your wastewater treatment plant is doing a really good job. The Outstanding Performance Award means that they, they did everything right for the whole year. This is 2018 and there was zero violations for the whole year. That's violations that would be, um, water that's not clean, or it could be wa, uh, sampling that wasn't done, or maintenance that wasn't performed. So this is multi-million dollars worth of equipment that's being really well taken care of and water that's being well taken, well treated before it's going into the river. So appreciate all the work that the, the operators do and if they'd like to come up here.
Yeah, William.
Yes.
William, it's not his fault, you guys.
William Leroux and lead operator is Bill Newman and like to recognize the, the kid, Austin Simmons, as well as, as an operator, who has a worker down there to treat it. They're doing a really good job and present this to them.
Good job.
Well, he'll, he'll have a chance to talk during the office report. Yeah, so it is 12. This is 12.
I, I think it is, yeah.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
And I, I'd like to mention for those of you who don't know, that the, the water treatment plant that we have, wastewater, is for all four communities here. And it's the only one between here and maybe even if there's anything in Ellensburg. I don't think you guys do anything, do you, up at the pass for your super discharge? He's one, three in Illinois. We're all working together on it, but this whole upper reach of the Akama River has water. Okay, so I'll move on from there. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now is it okay if I go with the synergy? Is there a motion? Move the second. As presented, all those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So we'll move the committee report from the lodging tax now.
So, we have, we have considered both a, um, both prepared by the city, uh, on an application for the transit bus. We, you know, we wanted to make sure that we did due process and considered it carefully. And the justification for granting it from the lodging tax and why we felt like it was justifiable is, um, it does have the potential to bring people to Clayellum for commerce and for lodging stays and also to facilitate lodging, because you come to Clayellum, you know that there's a bus that stops here, 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 and here. And so, uh, and so after deliberations, our committee is recommending that we grant the, the full amount that was requested, if I remember correctly, it was 20 grand? It was for the amount that was requested, yeah. But it was the amount that was requested. Also, I'll remind the council that we committed in concept by unanimous vote earlier when the transit bus came and asked for our support and help. And so, we're definitely flushing the fund to do it. And so we're recommending that to council and seeking, and I would motion to that effect and seek a second.
Did you, so was that, oh, I'm second. So the recommendation is to approve the lodging tax money for the transit bus?
An amount of $20,000.
Okay, any questions on that? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that's approved.
The other...
Thank you.
So, do you have anything you want to say?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to add, if you would mind, um, just so you guys know that what we are working on at Hope Source for the bus is that we are gonna put flyers, or little cards, I'm sorry, little cards on the bus, so we can ask where they reside, where they're going, and why they choose to ride the bus. So we'll start collecting those once we get those on the buses. And then we are going to take our flyers, once we get them printed, since I apologize, I was hoping to have them before we got here, um, in all the hotels and let them know it is a free service, and so hopefully the hotels will also tell their individuals that stay there. So, we're hoping to get the riders shipped up, so we had 682 riders as of this morning on the bus.
And it's been going for...
Since July, the first, July 8th, I wanna say?
Yeah, July.
Yeah.
This is a big deal. I got, I got grandkids that live at North Bend and the high school over there, just, just one, one benefit that is available that's here too, I'm sure, is the high school there will let the kids take college courses to senior year high school. But North Bend, which is bigger than us, they have a bus that goes to Sacami and Fall City. Doesn't go to Delphi where the college is. So the kids don't have their own transportation, they can't get here to take advantage of this, which is a huge savings to them if they're going to go to school, especially if they don't work their way through, because they get this degree, they can get a year and a half of college for free by taking all their high school. And it is, you know, this bus is just a marvelous thing for so many reasons.
Thank you.
So thank you.
The second item that we'll report on is that the city of Clayellum also submitted to the lodging tax a, um, a application, request for proposal funding for Christmas tree lighting. And last year, we feel like that went well and a lot was learned. And it was just a single site that was given, um, funding. And this year, that site, the amount, we believe has gone, oh, you know, it's gone down. But the proposal this year is for six sites for the Flagpole Park to be continued. Also, the downtown light pole decorations. There's, one way or another, work has to be done and funding this would allow their crews, the bucket trucks, to do some work and to be able to work with our city crew and get more than just putting up lights, some other maintenance that needs to be done. The city hall, the fire department, the library right adjacent, and the police station. And we feel like all these are worthy places and would show beautification and would, would allow, you know, in the future years, when we reset up these lights, the amount asked would be less. It is a substantial amount and it is, uh, the total is $24,320. But I'll remind you, it's not coming out of the direct taxing of any of the citizens, it's coming out of the lodging tax, you know. When the lodging tax is collected, when people come into the city of Clayellum and they stay at a hotel, uh, then they're charged a certain percentage and that sent, that amount accrues. And, uh, and so we're well flush, we feel like this is a good time to invest in some infrastructure, which that really is what this is, is getting that lighting infrastructure done. And it is a draw. And I could give you better statistics, but it is a huge draw when we have our Christmas in Clayellum and those lights. So, we are recommending, uh, full funding also of this project, product. But again, I'll stress, it wasn't just a rubber stamp. We had some back and forth, we really wanted to understand this. And after looking at a lot of different ways, we feel like it's a, it's a good, good project. We like to, uh, we like to see it funded. And we're, and so we're recommending it to council to approve the application and to fund it in the amount of $24,320.
So move. Okay, it's moved, is there a second?
I'm sorry.
Okay, moved and seconded to approve lodging grant of $24,620 for...
326. $24,320.
320. Okay, questions on the motions?
Well, is it a city project or downtown association or chamber? I mean, I just don't like the city, why is the city paying for it, why are we giving money out of the tax, lodging tax that...
We can apply to ourself for anything that would promote tourism. Nothing excludes us from applying to that. You know, I can tell you in the future that we'll, that we have plans, our strategy. Well, understand this, the chamber administers a contract for, at present, about $106,000. Nothing precludes the city from being able to administrate that same contract, provide the same services to itself and apply to itself to be remunerated from that fund. So, it will happen on a much grander scale, but this is being contracted out to a private company who will come and set up the lights and maintain them and then store them when they're not in use. So, yeah.
And you're, I mean, they're not taking money away from somebody else that's working for it at this time?
No, we're very, again, we're very flush, we're, we've, yeah, people's ask for the events most, this year, I would say our ask has been traditionally, is higher than tradition, um, in the different projects, but because we've banked it up, we have it. But we're definitely not in any way endangering future strategies, 'cause we, I will tell you, main, the make, the banking up of the monies, we've been very public about it, is not to have this huge slush fund for any event that wants to come in, it's been for capital projects. We want to build a, you know, in the park, we, we have a vision of, you know, some type of, um, event center, you know, or events facilities that can facilitate events happening there. And we're well able, and especially with our current strategy that we're contemplating, we could see ground possibly broken within a year. And it done very affordably. And we have some big events that are talking with the city about possibly happening, moving from other venues and coming to our city because of the white park and other things that we have, so it's exciting.
All right, if there's no other questions, all those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that one's approved. Is that it then?
That is all the, the committee has to report on right now.
Okay, so when we go down here to office reports, I'm gonna ask that the fire chief be able to get this report first, so that he can go, he has a safety meeting that probably is going right now?
Uh, not quite yet. So, Honorable Mayor, City Council, uh, month of September, we had 67 incidents, 54 calls, one car fire, uh, that we were counseling route, an assistant called a Roslyn for an outside fire, uh, one electrical firing dysfunction, two smoke odor scares and investigations, and 45 EMS calls, one being a vehicle accident with injuries. Uh, we got brush 511 back, back home in the station, uh, it's been fixed, so that's, that's back in service. Uh, we also have bids, open bids out, so we placed a request for open bids for a fire, a classified fire pumper, 1,500 gallon per minute, 750 gallon at least capacity. So, uh, that's open until deadline of October 25th. You can pick up electronic copy through the city or at city hall here. Medical class is starting, so tonight we have a AFA, which is advanced first aid class. Several of us took it last year, this is a refresher. Uh, we also have a advanced first aid class that will be starting here in November, and I've got, I believe, three people that'll be attending that. Uh, and then in the month of January, we usually start up EMT, and I think I've got about three individuals that are interested in that. So, it's kind of exciting to see some of the individuals getting back into the medical side, being that 80, 85% of our calls are on medical, so. We've got room for more volunteers, so if you're interested in volunteer for the fire department, uh, get an application here at city hall or contact myself. Along with that, we have a group that's designed to, it's a nonprofit group, it's the association, and it's designed just to support the fire department. So there's always room if you're not willing to or wanting to fight fire or do that kind of line of work, we're open to have people come and help us raise money and support the fire department. So, uh, you can pick it up in app at the fire station. And, uh, last, uh, Nathan, our president, and my assistant chief, uh, he's the president of the association right now, uh, he was gonna bring a RIT bag, bag by, and he still will do that, he just wasn't available tonight, he's on duty up at the medic unit. So, uh, what a RIT bag is, is that's a rescue, uh, bag that we use to put outside, and we purchased two of those, and we, we actually purchased that through the association money. So that's money that they went out and raised and, and the members of this department or group voted to purchase a RIT bag. And what that is, is there's ropes and, uh, air, uh, masks to supply air, so if you have firefighters that go in, you have two in and two out, if you have anybody that goes down, those bags are a rescue tool to where a rescue team can go in and rescue those people. So, they're about three grand. So pretty significant purchase for the city. And, and hopefully he'll get that in here and show you, it's kind of a, a neat little bag that everything goes into and they sit right in the engine, so you can grab it out, you lay a tarp out, you lay all your tools and you have them all ready to go in case there is an emergency, so.
Any questions? Thank you, Evan.
All right, thank you.
You're free, free to go. Got his first assistant. Okay, uh, now we'll hear from our city administrator, Rob.
Great, thank you, Honorable Mayor, City Council. Uh, first thing I would like to, there's actually just a reminder for the city clerk to make sure that all council with email, to check your emails regularly. Um, and also to speak into the mic, um, don't be afraid of the mic, it's not really amplifying it, it is, uh, just recording it, and make sure it's on too, just a reminder. And so on is up. Oh, we checked already.
So just, don't play with that red button.
Don't play with the red button. Yeah, rock. Okay. Uh, moving along, uh, so you've probably noticed maybe in, a couple of items in the newspaper. Uh, first, like our, our fire chief just mentioned, we have requests for bids out for a new fire truck. So that will be a bid opening towards the end of the month. Uh, second, we do have a job opening in city hall for an office assistant. Uh, it's out in the newspaper, it's not a new position, it's just replacing a current position. Building permit report, uh, last month, September, issued four permits, uh, for a total this year of 52 permits. And brought in almost $85,000 in permit fees and also, uh, performed 52 inspections. So, it's, it's, inspections are up quite a bit from last year. Uh, next, uh, if you may or may not have noticed, we've got the city hall painted, it's done, and, uh, kind of new, new fresh colors. And hopefully, uh, so the police department reroute is slated to start this week and hopefully tomorrow. So just in the nick of time before this, no. Oh, the audit, uh, the, the three-year audit was completed last week. Uh, right now, they're putting together their reports and plan to have an exit conference in the next few weeks. Uh, the budget committee, the mayor and myself have been meeting regularly. We're working on the 2020 budget and plan to present, um, a balanced budget at the first meeting of November. So, stay tuned for that. And speaking of the budget, in your packet, uh, there's a, there's a third quarter budget for this year's budget. It's the third quarter, so that means, uh, on the right-hand side, it should be 75%. Obviously, there's, there's, you know, kind of different varying percentages, but that's, uh, but overall, uh, we're doing okay. Revenues are up a little bit, but so is spending, so we're going to, um, kind of taper off the spending here from now on to the end of the year. Make sure that we're, we're, we're within budget. And if, of course, if you have any questions on the budget, uh, our treasurer is happy to, to answer them, or myself. And that's all I have for right now.
Thank you, Rob. Um, now we'll hear from our city planner, Lucy Temple.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council. So report on a couple of things. One is the freshwater intake project for the upstream side channel dredging in the Akama River, which is just upstream from the bridge that goes across to South Clayellum. We got the permits for that and Mike or William might talk more about that, uh, project, but the permitting, um, it's always been done under emergency permitting, but after so many years of having an emergency permit, same time every year, we were kind of asked to get permits. So we did, and this was just for this year, and we're gonna turn the applications right around and go for five-year or 10-year permits with the varying agencies that were involved, so Fish and Wildlife and, and the Corps of Engineers and such. So we'll have long-term permits and we won't have to do this again for several more years.
Maybe you should explain why we have to do that.
Yeah, so I think, yeah, I just, it's kind of a little out of order, so Mike or William might talk about, um, what the project is or when it might need to happen.
Okay.
Um, there were, I did issue two SEPA determinations today. Um, one was a determination of non-significance for a cemetery expansion project, and, um, those, the documents were put in all the council's mailboxes. And then, um, the update on that is that the ground penetrating radar, it's being done by Central Washington University, um, to detect anomalies in the ground, to detect potential burial sites. And that's supposed to start this week, and then it's gonna be followed up by a review, um, from the cultural resources, uh, the archaeologist. And then the recommendation to, um, the Department of Archaeology and Historic Preservation was for an expedited review and no permit. So they, the state has gotten back to me and said, as long as there are no, um, signs that there are burials in those locations, then they could go ahead with that expedited review, review and no permit. So we should know in a couple of weeks what direction they're gonna take on that. And then, the last, the second issuance of a SEPA determination was for a determination of significance, and that is for a proposed Bullfrog Flats master site plan modification. And those SEPA documents are at your seats, well, it's just the notification and a map is at your seat. Um, the material is found on the city website under public notices, and then it says, um, the proposed 47-degree north project or Bullfrog Flats. But the website's in the notification as well. There's, um, a, a hearing notice on the wall by the door and then posted kind of around town on our website, um, and our, on our Facebook account. And we encourage everyone to attend a scoping meeting, it's a public scoping meeting, it's gonna be held October 23rd, 5:30 PM, in the middle school multipurpose room. And that's a chance for everybody to come in and see what the developer's proposing and hear from the, um, hear a little bit more about the SEPA process. And then questions and comments need to be directed to me. So if council gets any, um, comments on it, please forward it to me as soon as possible. If you get a handwritten thing, bring it in, and if you get an email, just forward it right on to me, um, as I have the charge of tracking all written comments. There we go. That's it. We'll talk this meeting on the 23rd. 5:30 PM, in the middle school multipurpose room, October 23rd.
If there's something else, now we'll go down to our public works director, Mike.
Honorable Mayor, council members, uh, to kind of elaborate a little bit on what Lucy was referring to with the water intake. Uh, if you go over to South Clayellum, or over the bridge there, right by the ball fields, look to your left in the river, you'll see our water intakes off the Akama. Uh, what we have to keep an eye on is the water levels. If you look to the other side of the bridge, where that water comes from, off the main inlet of the river, uh, just because of natural currents and flows, the rocks kind of build a dike across there, which causes the water to divert from going into our water intake. So this permit allows city crews to get in there with the machinery and remove them rock dykes. dikes and dams to allow free-flowing water to get into our intakes, which is obviously very important. The more water we can keep in there, the less probability we're gonna have of freezing come winter time, so that's why it's so important for us to get in there sooner rather than later, so if you happen to see machinery down in the river within the next week or two, it's on purpose. New water meters thankfully showed up today, as a matter of fact, this morning. Of course, all hands on deck, crews jumped right in and started hammering those out, they had a pretty good run on it. They're starting up at Clealum Pines West, Division Two and Three. Those, a lot of those residents up there had ancient meters, even though it's a new development, we were trying to not have to buy new meters that we knew we weren't gonna use and upgrade from, so we started up there to get those upgraded and moving ahead, and just gonna slowly start working our way through town as fast as we can. Couple of questions from people about what's going on at the horse park, they see a lot of pipe, a lot of equipment. One is obviously the new indoor arena, or covered arena, indoor, covered arena, that progress is going along quite rapidly, those guys, a lot of people are impressed when they go up there and see the layout of the footings and realize exactly how big that building's gonna be, it's pretty impressive. All the blue pipe that you see is water main, a new water main that's going in, and it's mainly to feed fire hydrants and stuff for fire out in that area, which is something that we all could contest, and we all can contest we need out there. Had a phone call last week, on Friday, went out and investigated, and sure enough, our furry local residents are playing havoc on our cemetery, so if you go up there and you see a bunch of headstones knocked over, believe it or not, it's not the kids this time, it's actually the elk. They're in the middle of their, playing their reindeer games right now, and when they wrestle around, they tend to bump into those headstones and knock them over, so we'll have to look at a long-term fix for that. Crews have been frantically with the weather coming in, we're finishing up winterizing all the park irrigations and ball field irrigation systems. This last two weeks since the last meeting, for some reason, we went through another bad plague of getting slammed with some pretty good-sized water leaks, we had six of them in the last two weeks. Of course, with the team we got, they jumped right on it. Just a heads up, the iWork system that you guys approved us to get for our work orders, I just wanted to give you a report on that, that in the five months that that's been going, we've had over 222 work orders put in, which equates out to about 45, or 44 and a half a month. You do the math, and working days, that's two to three, sometimes more, a day that we're receiving in work orders, so the system honestly really is working, so thank you for allowing us to get that. Then hopefully, if the computer plays nice, we'll finish up what we were gonna do last week, give you guys a little sneak peek into the underground sewer system here in your wonderful city, to let you guys kind of see what we're up against, and these are all pictures of the TV screen inside the camera truck that we bought. Unfortunately, we're still working on the system in there to figure out how we can just get live views, so this is just a PowerPoint presentation to show you. This here is an example of a manhole, if you look to the right, you'll see where it's actually crumbling, and to kind of give you, I don't know the exact date of this manhole, but this was back several years ago, when they actually used to hand form your manholes with brick, like the new ones are now cast and place concrete, so they look a lot different. This one here, you can see actually where the pipe is separating, so anybody that I'm sure can figure it out, thankfully, that one separated in the direction it did, the downstream pipe is the one that's falling and not the upstream pipe. We have some that you'll see sooner as we go along here that are the opposite way, which is causing the solids to back up, which creates havoc for the crews. Tree roots, gotta love tree roots, so you guys can imagine as the solids come flowing through there, they get hung up, so when you, when your sewer system's backing up, normally most of these are culprits. More tree roots, more fun furry tree roots. This is actually a piece of pipe, I'm not sure why it's blue, but that's a section of pipe that's actually missing. We found the pipe when we jetted it, actually brought it out to the manhole, and we were able to recover it, so it won't create any more problems in the future. There's another one that's separating and cracking.
Oh.
Oh, that's a video, yeah.
Do you want the video?
It just shows how long it goes down there, and it's just a big, long crack. More cracks, more cracks and breaks, more cracks and breaks. And one of the problems that's coming up, you guys will see when we get to that one, go ahead Lucy. See, there's a piece of the pipe that we actually got out, and that's our back truck that's about to siphon all the debris out. More tree roots, more holes in tree roots, more holes and cracks. So this one here is actually a video too, one of the problems that we've had in the past that I'm sure you've all heard about is I&amp;I issues. So I'm not gonna go, there you go. So that's just groundwater that's just pumping right into the sewer system that Willie's having to work double time to treat down there, so. This is kind of just a quick rough draft, that's all the pictures we have for you guys at this point, and believe it or not, that there is only cammering about an eighth of our system. We have not even put a dent in our system, and that's already the concerns and issues that we're running into. This is just kind of a heads up that eventually down the road, we're gonna be looking at how we can start repairing a lot of this area, so. That's all I got.
That camera truck was a good investment. There it is.
At least when you know what the problems are, you know what you have to fix.
And that's one thing, just to reiterate, if you went back to the pictures, and some of you might have noticed, on the bottom left-hand corner, it actually has footages, that thing, it's got a pin that we can put on the top, that we can physically GPS mark where everything's at, so when we do run into problems or we do get the funding we need to make some of these repairs, or if we notice major repair issues, we can actually run that camera up there, pinpoint exactly on top where it's at, so we're not really going fishing for it, we're, we actually know exactly where the problem lies, and we can dig right to it and get it taken care of, so. It is definitely a very handy truck. Thank you.
And now we'll hear from our police chief.
Thank you, mayor, council. We've had two bookings since our last meeting, one was a significant incident involving a traffic accident, they probably saw it first in Stafford. It was a head-on collision, resulted in the driver, the victim, getting a head injury, that was significant, and that where she was taken to Harborview. The other driver, the suspect, was arrested for he-plea assault in cause of that, refused any type of field sobriety test, therefore he was transported to the hospital where a blood mark was obtained to team work for EBNX collection. He was also booked for reckless endangerment because he had his four-year-old child with him in the car. Neither the suspect or the child were injured at all. Another thing we had was just yesterday, we had a felony elude that went from Roswell down to Bullfrog, so you've heard about that, but what that stemmed from was an initial assault-forth incident. The suspect was located, one of our officers attempted to make a stop, he fled. Officer pursued till the roundabout when he went to Bullfrog, but due to the erratic driving, and we were able to identify who that was, the pursuit was discontinued. The officer did trail down Bullfrog Road, saw that he went onto the freeway, so near this scale house, he pulled over into the median, and he was taken into custody, so he was, he was booked for two counts of harassment, assault for, and of course, the felony elude. Other than a couple of other misdemeanor bookings, we had a couple more DUIs, and a separate assault-forth domestic violence case where they were booked. Today, our civil service committee meeting met, that was regarding to the promotional process that we're going through to replace my position, we'll be adding a sergeant and a corporal to get that back, and I'm, the civil service committee finalized the testing process, and hope to have that done and filled by the end of the month. Also, with our open position that we currently have, civil service committee was brought up to date on that as well, because we'll be involved with the hiring process to fill the number eight spot for Chief Ferguson's retirement, so they were brought to speed on that. We have received a few lateral entry applicants, so we're hoping to be able to get maybe a couple more before we have a hiring process begin, that would consist of an oral board, and of course, the civil service process. We currently have an officer in training this week, he's at the CIT, was his critical incident training, that is a direct result from Initiative 940, so that involves mental health awareness, it's a 40-hour class, that he'll be at class all week. Other officers, including myself, attended earlier in the week, the use of force class that was hosted by the sheriff's office, we brought in a use of force expert, and had a very well-structured 10-hour class that we were able to attend right there in Ellensburg, that was very good. And finally, we're up to about, well, we're over 3,500 calls for the year, and I compare that to last year. Last year, we didn't get up to past 3,500 calls till minimum February, so just about a month, month and a half. I have a schedule for a call. Thank you.
Okay, so now we've heard from our award-winning, all the officers.
Thank you, honorable mayor, and the council. In the package, you'll find my usual graphs, not a whole lot going on there, other than the water plant is down about 20 million gallons in production, wastewater plant is down a little over 12 million for treatment. The biggest factors in the sort of water plant has been the weather, colder weather, less use outside, production goes down. The wastewater plant, this tags on to what Mike was talking about, one of the biggest things that had happened in September was the irrigation flows of the river have backed off, and because of that, the groundwater levels are going down, which means we have less I&amp;I, which means we have less water coming into the wastewater plant that we're treating, so it all goes hand in hand out there. Again, at the water plant, we're in the hiring process, we made an offer to a local fellow, we're hoping to have that process completed, and I'm looking forward to possibly having him onboard by Monday, and then we'll start our training process and get things going, but I'm looking forward to getting that taken care of. Also down at the wastewater plant, we're getting ready for our winter flows kicking in, we've done a lot of maintenance work down there on the basin that's been offline, we just pulled the motive pump out, and it's in pretty bad shape, so we'll be coming back to you to talk to you about rebuild on that, but we put our spare pump in to get us through the winter. To speak to the awards, I really have to give a very big pat on the back to Bill Newman and Austin Simmons, these are the guys that are your frontline operators, responding to any issues or calls in the middle of the night, day, vacation, weekends, whatever, they're the ones that are there responding to that, and I really have to pat them on the back, because they know their job, they know the plant, and the thing that I really like about it is the fact that to them, it's a passion, it's not a paycheck. They're willing to do whatever it takes to get the job done, and I really appreciate that efforts, and it's an honor for me to be working with those guys, they make my job much, much easier. Happy to answer any questions you folks would have?
Sounds like you're free to go. Thanks. Thank you, Rob. Okay, we'll go down to citizen comments on non-attend items, is there anyone here in the audience that wished to address the council?
Yes.
Okay, well, just come on up, give us your name, and where you live, and then go ahead.
I'm Candy Snyder, and this is Shawna Minton. And we both, I live on Railroad Street, and Shawna lives on First, and we're here to address the problem of the drug problem and the homeless problem here in Clealum. And Shawna has some pictures that we've taken of some of the homeless.
Stuff that you had to endure, and, you know, walk around and see, and we just wanted to bring that to your guys' attention, and let you guys know, and she's got a letter.
Yeah, I'd like to read something, and Shawna can maybe pass the pictures around so you can see what's, what's over behind Marson and Marson, what's up at the cemetery, what's over at Hanson Pond. So as a result of an arson fire and burglary at our residence in May, I've become educated on the drug problem in Clealum. I know that the majority of the city's homeless population consists of drug addicts, I know you can buy or sell drugs in the Safeway parking lot, at the Warrior Quick Stop, at the City Park, the Cottage Restaurant, the Laundromat, to name a few locations, without any consequence. I know that many of the homeless in this town have criminal records for assault, theft, burglary, robbery, and drug possession. I know that it's not safe to take your children to the City Park or Hanson Pond for fear of stepping on needles or running into someone strung out on drugs. I know that it's a safety issue to go into our public library, where many of the drug addicts slash homeless hang out, and that our librarians are at risk of being assaulted or worse. I know that our police department is understaffed and does not have the resources to solve the crimes committed by the drug addicts, and the addicts know this too. I know that providing toilets, trash cans, and showers for them to use will not solve their problems, or the problem of letting them make this community an undesirable and unsafe place to live. I know that the city's infrastructure is not kept up with the increase in population. I know that unless the city either budgets for more police officers or enters into an inter-agency agreement with the Kidittas County Sheriff, that crime and drug use will continue to run rampant in our community. I encourage the city council and the mayor to visit some of these encampments, walk through our downtown area after dark, and become educated on what's going on in your community. I'm not sure what the solution is, but right now, the drug addicts have the run of the town, not the taxpayer citizens. Do you have any more?
Yeah, I did, I went on a walk, I'd say about a week ago, and thank goodness I have my kids with me, I was encountered by a guy named Greg something, he ended up cussing me out, flashing his genitals out at me, in fact, I'm still upset about it. I seen just, I mean, you can't even go on a nature walk, it's, it's really exciting what I've seen, and what I've actually cleaned up, it's like, I don't even wanna take my kids, it's sad, so.
Anyhow, that's what we wanted you to know, because I'm sure a lot of you haven't been through some of these places, or some of these encampments in town, you probably haven't tried to walk, I used to walk my dog downtown at night, can't do that anymore, they're doing drugs in the doorways of the businesses, so it's not a safe town anymore, and it's not clean town anymore, and there seems to be no consequences, like welcome to Clealum, do drugs here, sell drugs here, rob people.
Yeah, that's other things, we're having a lot of wars, and scary. Thank you.
Thank you. Could we get that letter for the rec? Thanks. Thank you. Well, I appreciate the heads up, although we are aware of it, so. Who worked with her? Let's see what we can do. Any others that wish to address the council?
Evening, honorable mayor, members of council, Chris Sullivan, Pre-Cat Ranch Street, Clealum. I, as a concerned citizen and property owner here in Clealum, I'm also very concerned about the increased, increasing amount of homeless people we have coming into the community. Sadly, on Monday, September 30th, I discovered a stolen shopping cart on the east end of Robert Avenue. The cart was sitting next to an individual's travel trailer, and I took photos and contacted Clealum Safeway store manager, Bill Thompson, who gave me his consent to return the shopping cart to Safeway, and I returned it to Mr. Thompson personally. cart to Safeway, and I returned it to Mr. Thompson personally. Also, Mr. Thompson indicated to me that just this year alone, he has had at least 50 shopping carts taken from the store. The carts cost a lot of money to replace. It's a known fact that homeless people do take shopping carts from businesses. It is illegal to take shopping carts from the premises, and it is outright theft. I walk a mile a day with my dog on the power line roads to the west of Clealum, also west of the cemetery near the horse park. I also have found two grotesque abandoned homeless camps consisting of piles of clothes, junk tents, blankets, sleeping bags, darts, improperly discarded needles from drug usage, beer cans, and alcohol bottles, complete filthy piles of trash that are unsafe and unsanitary. All of this litter is a result of homeless people camping on our city and county lands. One major question that I have is if a person such as myself chooses to devote my time and efforts to go clean up these areas using my own personal truck, would the city be willing to allow me a voucher or a pass to haul the trash to the transfer station? And if not, then why should I, as a taxpayer and dues payer in this community, have to pay this at my expense? Because this is what this is coming to. People here in Clealum, they don't want split up with the littering that goes on hand in hand with homeless camps. And also it has been said that our community should not entice the thoughts of putting out portable toilets or accommodations for trash pickup for the homeless. If we were to start this process, we might as well invite 100 more homeless people here, and not to mention, we would all suffer more as tax and dues payers to help support any such accommodations. I do have four photos I would like to show you as well. In the meantime, just last week, I was in Ellensburg, just off of Water Street, and I know that the city of Ellensburg went to a great deal of expensive trouble to clean up. There was a really ugly homeless camp between Water Street there and the Goodwill. That was three or four years ago. They had gotten that all cleaned up. It was all gone. Now, there's a ridiculous travel trailer there with a gentleman living there with piles of trash around the trailer, a large stack of dismantled bicycle parts, and getting the point back here. So I began to take some photos, only to be yelled and screamed at by the owner of the trailer of the debris. Here's pictures of the shopping cart at the east end of John Road Avenue. And I also took this last week, photo of a homeless gentleman. I don't know what he's doing, but it looks like he's actually, from what I could tell, he was pouring some type of liquid out of a, looks to be a plastic bottle into a bag, and this was on the west wall of the therapy center at the corner of Oaks and Railroad So as I was saying, the gentleman that owns this travel trailer by the Goodwill, he issued a yell and scream at me, and it's very disheartening to see that this is making a comeback. We certainly do not need this here in our beautiful town of Clealum, nor in Kidde Tass County. This will lower our commercial and residential land values. It could discourage interest of new people wanting to live here and being a part of our community. I sincerely hope this will all be carefully considered. Thank you. And you're welcome to keep those photos if you like. I don't need them.
May we have your letter, too, Mr. Sullivan? For the record.
Absolutely. P2.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Well, we should, I wouldn't mind sometime if you could mark on a map where some of those other homeless.
They're all over.
Well, I know, all over, but I want to know where exactly, so we can, we?
Marson and Marson.
Marson and Marson. The cemetery up by the horse park, South Clealum, is it Whistling Pines, right behind our house.
Your house is on?
907. Yeah, that's Marson and Marson. It's all around Hanson Ponds. You go up, yeah, the senior center up there is just completely trash. You can't even walk around. I don't even take my kids. It is so disgusting. We cleaned up numerous needles around Shoemaker's. There's been homeless people that are drug addicts. I get that there are people out there down on their luck. I do have a heart, but when they're using drugs and leaving their drug paraphernalia for my kids to walk around or get stuck by, it really upsets me, and this has been going on for quite a while. I think about three years ago was the first time I encountered it, and then after she was robbed and her house was arson, I am afraid to leave my house. They're all over, and it's just, you know, and they come out at night when we're sleeping. And, I mean, we even have cameras up now. It's just, you know, it never used to be like this, you know? I used to love to take them for bike rides and walks, and I don't even walk my dog anymore. You know, there was a lady robbed not that long ago, you had told me about, and I'm so afraid of, you know, it happening to me, or, you know, what if my kid's with me? And then like that Greg Amundsen of, what was it?
Gregory Amundsen.
Amundsen is the one that did what he did about a week ago when I went for a walk, and it's just, it's disheartening, it's disgusting, and he treated me like I was trespassing on his property, and he had, I mean, it's so disgusting down there, and what he said to me, I'm still traumatized because of the anxiety, and I'm afraid I'm going to see him again, you know? And I do work here in town, so with the public, and I just thank God I didn't have my kids with me, you know?
Right now, there's a trailer and a motorhome parked down by Merrill, Inc. I believe it's on Railroad Property. There's two of them down there. I don't know what they do with their wastewater, but I imagine it goes right on the ground there.
Oh, they, yeah.
And they've just moved from one location to another. A couple of years ago, I contacted the railroad police because there were probably close to, I don't know, 10 motorhomes, campers, abandoned cars on the railroad right of way out here that people were living in. There were drug needles all over the place. Railroad police finally came out and towed almost all of them, I think except for one camper, away, but now they're back.
Yeah.
So.
Doing the same old stuff. It's the same people, it seems like.
I don't know where they get the money to get these trailers and to get them towed where they're at, and when you go to some of these homeless encampments in the woods, they've got generators.
They do. And then there's people that are missing generators and gasoline, and, you know, they're living right by them, and they're just, they're afraid to leave their places, you know? They're chaining their stuff up. We're chaining our stuff up.
We had to lock our outdoor water spigots because our house that was burglarized and the arson fire was set.
Taking 20 gallons of water.
Still hasn't been put back together yet, so we're not living there, but the guy that lives in the trailer and the motorhome were using our water, we found out. So we had to put locks on our spigots so that they couldn't come into our yard and use our water. So, like I said, I don't know what the solution is, but this isn't, when the word gets out to some of the Westsiders that thinks this is such a wonderful place to come visit, they won't want to come here anymore, and the people that are living here are going to want to move.
Yeah.
Unless something is done.
We don't feel safe anymore. It's terrible.
Chris.
Thank you.
Can I say one more thing, too? I forgot, I know I'm not supposed to speak after I've left the podium, but I'm sure a lot of us are aware, there's also a travel trailer up on Safeway property, and it's on the west, it's on the west property line behind Burger King. There's like a Lincoln Town Car parked there, two or three other vehicles, and I talked to Bill Thompson, the store manager, about that, and he said, you know, like last week, he told them they needed to leave, and they're still there, and they're parked on store property camping.
I didn't guess. He was talking about this one right here. That's right, in the end of the parking lot of Safeway, but it's all over. This is like, and these pictures don't even give it justice. You literally have to see with your own two eyes to see what we're actually showing you. It's gross.
Okay, well, fantastic. Is there any other questions? I'd like to. Okay? Hello? Come on up. So now we'll go down to public appearances, and we're going to hear from Brian Sterni. How do you pronounce your last name, Brian?
Sterni.
Sterni.
Sterni, Ryan Joe Z.
And he has a request for a letter of support for a project they have about the city of Roseland.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and city council, for granting me time tonight. Just waiting for the presentation to come up, the way it was before, and you don't have to look around at the desktop anymore.
Sorry, I screwed it all up.
Oh, no, it's okay. I had a good device, so let's just try to, the only way to deal with anything with technology is to exit and then re-enter, right? Like that's all you ever need to do. Okay, well, thank you for your time tonight again, and your continued support. So I'm here to discuss a Department of Ecology Water Quality Program grant application for TNC managed land in the Dahmerie watershed, which is downstream impact to Clealum, and the grant is being applied to by the city of Roseland in partnership with Kidde Tass Conservation Trust. So it's a nature conservancy currently managed land being applied for by the city of Roseland and Kidde Tass Conservation Trust. As some of you might know, because I've been here saying this a couple times before, Nature Conservancy in 2014 acquired 50,000 acres of land here in the Central Cascade Forest, and I like to say we acquired because we don't own it, we just manage it. So our goal is to find permanent protection measures for all these parcels here in Kidde Tass County, and in order to do that, we've been also transferring land into U.S. Forest Service, so the map you see above there is a similar map, you saw one before, but now there are some yellow and purple parcels that have been transferred out to the United States Forest Service, and that's through land water conservation dollars, so not through tax dollars. And the reason why we've parceled those out, we actually just transferred our 10,000 acres to the U.S. Forest Service in the past four years, and those are all higher elevation lands. They fall within the Oak County Forest, so it kind of makes sense that they go to U.S. Forest Service to stitch back together that kind of disjointed management of which the tech board has, and so, so now for. So the parcel in question tonight is just west of Lake Clealum in the Dahmerie watershed. Dahmerie Creek is a small, relatively healthy stream in the upper Yakima watershed, direct tributary to Lower Clealum River, a few miles from the city of Roseland. Dahmerie Creek has provided the city of Roseland's drinking water supply for over a century. The city of Roseland's current water service area consists of about 450 acres, including the area within the city's corporate limits, Ronald and the Clealum and Ronald School Districts, Clealum and Roseland School Districts. The city has secured water rights to provide potable water to its customers and residents and school districts. However, without permanent protection, the properties are at risk of potential development. These are already parceled up, so if they were not permanently protected under permanent conservation ownership, they could be subject to further parcelling, which increases mismanagement for fire. Once you carve up land, it's hard to get everyone get that together and mitigate fire. So the city of Roseland.
Excuse me. I got a question. Can you go back to that last slide?
Please, please.
Okay. It's section nine there, it says Roseland Pond and Intake.
Correct.
Don't you folks own that property?
We just manage that property, so it's.
Who owns it?
It's a, we acquired it through a private conservation investor, so it's owned by an LLC called CCF LLC. All of our lands are actually in the, the initial acquisition I was speaking of earlier.
Well, that's the 48, part of the 48,000 acres.
Yes, sir.
Went from Plum Creek to the Nature Conservancy.
That's correct, sir.
Okay, so what you're telling me is that you're planning to develop Dahmerie Creek.
No, sir.
Because you own it.
No, so the Nature Conservancy does not own it. A private conservation investor purchased all the 48,000 acres from Plum Creek in order for the Nature Conservancy.
In the community, it's always been the Nature Conservancy, and this CCF LLC has been the holding entity.
Yes.
That was the same as talking about the Nature Conservancy.
Correct.
I've never heard of them being, going on separate lines.
I mean, we're.
I don't understand this, because, I mean, that's your land in Dahmerie Creek, so isn't it up to you to protect it?
It is, for a 10-year period, which was agreed upon with a private conservation investor. So those 10 years were coming up, the reason why we've transferred to Forest Service in some areas is to transfer it to permanent ownership in order to protect the landscape.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, sorry. Sometimes I think that everyone's in my head and knows everything that I know about all this work I do every day, so I apologize if I wasn't clear about that, sir. So, yeah, so the measure for this parcel here, we're thinking for permanent protection, is to transfer to ownership in the city of Roseland, and by doing that, applying to this Department of Ecology Water Grant that I'm here today to talk to you a little bit about. And, yeah, feel free to ask questions as I go along, it's not a very long presentation. So, yeah, the city of Roseland recognizes the importance of maintaining the best water quality and sufficient qualities to support its water service area, and has already taken important steps to acquire and protect water rights and continue to update and maintain its water system infrastructure. However, it's also important that the city play a key role in acquiring these critical parcels, as the most efficient and reliable means of protecting water supply permanently is to own the parcel itself. And we want to emphasize that we're all in this together. The Nature Conservancy and Kidde Tass Conservation Trust, like the city, are committed to ongoing relationships that support forest protection. So even after the parcels are gone, Nature Conservancy isn't gone. We're embedding in the area, working cross collaborating with lots of state, federal, and private landowners to help conserve areas of land and protect them from wildfire. So in addition to clean water, fish, wildlife habitat, and a community connection to nature, ownership of this parcel would enable management for forest health and wildfire resilience, all with downstream impacts to the city of Clealum, which I'll get to in just a moment here. So as we all know, our forests need to be actively managed to reduce the risk of catastrophic fires. We learned that in 2017 pretty quickly. So management strategies, as you likely know, thinning, sustainable forest harvesting, replanting to enhance the natural diversity, and prescribed fire and controlled burns, which you've probably seen some smoke coming from the ridge in the past couple of days, getting some controlled burns up there. So threat to the city's water supply from wildfire exists, and studies showing a record of damage to watersheds can occur. So these impacts from wildfire to potable water can impact the quality and quantity of water available by causing soil erosion, increased flooding, and debris flow. During active burning, ash and contaminants can contaminate the water, and when vegetation is destroyed that holds the soil in place and retains water, results in erosion, flooding, and critical sediment levels within the streams. So as I mentioned before, the city's pond and intake are all on section nine. Section nine is 640 acres, like you guys know, and lies almost entirely within the Dahmerie Creek watershed, and actually includes one mile of the Dahmerie Creek itself. Kidde Tass Conservation Trust is also interested in sections 16 and 14, but right now, we're just focusing on the city of Roseland acquiring section nine. These are expensive parcels because they have been carved up a little bit, and their geographic location makes them a little pricey, so we're kind of going one step at a time here, and hopefully a multi-tiered grant application. So while it continues to updates and maintains its water system infrastructure, the city of Roseland recognizes that acquisition and proper stewardship of the land within the watershed are likely the most effective means of protecting the city's water supply in the future. This funding program provides the city the means to permanently protect its watershed for long term. The Nature Conservancy staff has begun drafting the grant application in collaboration with Kidde Tass Conservation Trust and the city of Roseland, for the city to acquire this section with Kidde. for the city to acquire this section with Kititas Conservation Trust and the Nature Conservancy assisting in the management plan for future management for the parcel and possibly transferring ownership to Kititas Conservation Trust in the future, depending on what that looks like and how things go. Kititas Conservation Trust, if you don't know, is a local nonprofit conservation organization. It's a partner with the city of Roslin and the Nature Conservancy. It is committed to finding solutions to protect, among other things, fish and wildlife habitat, forest health, water quality, while increasing its resiliency to catastrophic wildfires. So kind of all in the same team together there. KCT and the city of Roslin are reviewing the grant application and TNC will continue to hone the proposal until the submission date. So we're kind of all working out together, but the city of Roslin would be the applicant. And that is important for two reasons, because if the city is the official applicant, it makes them eligible for other grants. And also, it kind of demonstrates the Water Quality Program grant that we're applying for, that they have a lot of skin in the game, that the city of Roslin is committed to owning it, so it'll help them rank higher in the grant application. So where does this mean for the city of Clayellum? So obviously watershed and aquatic health, so large portions of the Dahmerie Creek watershed are at risk of wildfire and dispersed residential development. Both threats would negatively impact the watershed by increasing sediment load into the upper Yakima Basin, which is already impaired by non-point pollutions. It'll help benefit cooler water, which will feed into the lower Clayellum and benefit endangered fish species. And further downstream on the lower Clayellum River, the city of Clayellum has ring wells installed at the Bullfrog Road Bridge as an alternative water source. Clayellum's main water take, as you all know, sure, is on the Yakima River downstream of the confluence of the city of Clayellum River at the South Clayellum Bridge, which all this kind of feeds into. And as I mentioned earlier, the public school district for city of Clayellum and Roslin gets its water from the Dahmerie Creek intake pond there. And honestly, the application can only improve the overall health. There's no cost to the city of Clayellum. So I'm asking that you guys take a look at that letter that Kathy was very kind enough to print and put in front of you guys tonight for if you see fit for the mayor to give the signature to, or if you need some edits.
Could you just be open, I didn't hear what you were asking the city to do?
Oh, sure, sure, my apologies. Just to take a look at the letter of support for the grant application and see if it's in the city's interest to have the mayor sign the letter in order to have the grant application disqualified. And any questions, he'll be happy to answer.
I think I know section nine better than you and everybody else.
I've only been there once, I'm not going to lie to you.
I used to work for the former owner.
Yeah.
I know it very well. This is some nice, nice proposal. And it goes from one owner to another. What is to prevent the next owner from selling off three quarters of it for development?
Well, in hopes that the city of Roslin owns it in perpetuity and that their main interest is the watershed there. So the pond is direct input, which goes to the--
If the city gets into financial problems, is it not an asset that they could sell?
It would be, which is, I think, partially why it might eventually wind up in the hands of Kititas Conservation Trust, who would be able to then probably put a conservation easement on it, so the land--
And I'm thinking a conservation easement might be a better way to go. And maybe that could be done now. Well, go back to your map there that shows a little farther--
Sure, just get moved a little bit slow.
Okay. See, where it says Roslin Pond and Intake, that blue dot. Well, everything below and to the right of that dot is not a part of the Roslin watershed, which is about seven-eighths of the property. And it could all go to something else without affecting the Roslin Dahmerie Creek watershed. The main part of the watershed is up to the left on the national forest, which is out of section nine. So just a point of clarification, I think it's fine, but I think the height is big enough. I'm not sure it's all that well thought out.
Right. And so while conservation easement would be the best idea now, given that the Nature Conservancy isn't the owner of the land, a conservation easement isn't in our, we're not able to do it because we don't own the land. That would dramatically decrease the value of the land and we're supposed to be paying back our conservation investors.
So this is a grant to the city of Roslin to purchase section nine?
Yes, sir.
Fair enough.
And of course, it'd be a form review, so nothing is--
What my point is, the city of Roslin could sell at least 500 of the 640 acres and not touch the issues that you just talked about.
Right. I could, if you want, I could--
I know the ground very well.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it. Like I said, I've only been out there once and you likely know it 100 times better than I do. I can send you the grant application if you want to take a look at it, but I believe there is language in there, the Central Cascade Forest.
It's okay.
Okay.
You know, there are neighbors and supporters.
Okay.
I like the idea, but it's only a small part of it that's watershed. It's just kind of overstated, is what my point is. But that's a problem. There's even a tree out there with my name carved on it.
Oh, really? I could write the grant application-- We can put in the grant application that that tree goes to you.
It says Ken's Tree, right there.
I would like to motion that we authorize the mayor to sign this endorsement that was presented to us. The verbiage, I think, is adequate, and take a second.
Okay, move to second, authorize the mayor to sign this letter of endorsement for the Dahmerie Creek watershed project for the city of Roslin. Questions on the motion? Not all in favor with aye?
Aye.
Close? Okay, that is passed. We'll sign that letter for you.
All right, thank you, Honorable Mayor.
And pick it up real soon. Probably a little better copy.
Sounds perfect. Thank you for your continued support, City Council. The Nature Conservancy really appreciates the partnership we have and all the work we get to do together, so very much appreciate it. Thank you, thank you for your time.
It was even a little educational, you know.
Oh, wow. That's the best thing I've heard all day, thank you.
Okay, so we'll take care of that. So now we're going down to business of trying public hearings. And we'll have an introduction to ordinance 1568, the 2020 tax levy by Robert Pullman, our city administrator. We'll open it up to the public comments. And then after that, we'll close it and we'll have council deliberate.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, City Council. This is something that we do every year. It's basically by signing this, we authorize the county to increase the regular property tax 1%. Like I said, we do this every year. And that's the open.
Well, not yet. Well, introduce it to them. And so basically, that's what we're doing. And so I'll open the public hearing for people in the audience here to comment on our resolution 1568 to increase the property tax 1%. Seeing there's nobody's interested in saying anything about it, I'll close the public hearing and open it up for the council to discuss. And I imagine you guys know why we do this. We do it every year. This is as much as they'll let us do it. It is sort of bookkeeping, but--
So do I clearly rate it 1% or what, $7,000, $3,000?
Right. More, more--
From a thousand plus property, sorry?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Nobody likes to be the person to propose the motion to adopt any tax. Certainly, but it is certainly necessary to the operation of our city. I would like to motion that we adopt ordinance/resolution number 1568 as presented.
Second. Move to second, to adopt ordinance/resolution number 1568. But I will mention that actually what you saw on the top was last year. And this year, we expect to get at least 760. It's on the second page.
Oh, really?
Yes. So are there questions on the motion? If not, all in favor with aye?
Aye.
Close? Now we'll have our second public hearing, and that's resolution 2019-014. And this is adopting the Kititas County Hazard Mitigation Plan. And a planner, Lucy Temple, will explain it to everybody. And then we'll open a public hearing to see what anyone has to say. And then you guys can deliberate.
Thank you. So we had, just a little bit of history on this. We had an application out for FEMA funding in 2015 that the county actually applied for on our behalf to stabilize the bank at Hanson Ponds, the Yakima River Bank. They're right next to the park. And also to armor the side channel that goes into the Hanson Ponds, because it's really important that we don't let the Thawag, or the main flow of the river, overtake the side channel and become in the Hanson Ponds, have Hanson Ponds become the river. And the biggest reason for this is because out on that trail that's now disconnected because the bridge washed out is our sewer outfall structure. Very, very big deal. So in 2015, this application went out to FEMA and it shortly thereafter got hung out and paused out in their application process because we had to have a formal annex into a compliant county hazard mitigation plan. And the county's plan was out of compliance because it had expired. So fast forward to 2018. And as a city planner, I started to actively participate in the county's update to their hazard mitigation plan, which is required to have a formal annex or like an appendix for the city of Clayellum in their plan. So if you can see the checkboxes there in my staff report, these are required by FEMA in order to get that grant going. But also to have a hazard mitigation plan is also a requirement by the state for all cities and counties to have one. So in lieu of our us paying a really high amount to a consultant, all we really had to do was just participate in the process to have it done. And so then the very final part of that is to formally adopt the hazard mitigation plan and then I'll send proof to FEMA that we have had that done. In the meantime, since that hazard mitigation plan from the county came back into compliance, it was accepted by FEMA and that kicked our grant application that had been hanging out there back into the hopper. And because I'd been communicating with the Department of Military Representative for FEMA this whole time, they actually applied for that funding on our behalf. So that prioritized the money, basically it's a sure thing. Otherwise, we'd be looking at another couple of years. So that was really cool that they saw that we'd really been working hard on this. So this will be the first step, adopting the resolution 2019-014, adopting the, formally adopting the Kititas County Hazard Mitigation Plan. And then FEMA assured me that we should start to see some money from that grant. We should start, we should see the money in 2020. And then we have three years to be able to spend that. So over time, we can, we can work to get that bank stabilized and things like that. So that's my request, is to adopt the resolution as proposed.
So with that, I'll open the public hearing for anyone here who'd wish to comment on this ordinance that we're going to adopt, the life of that. And the resolution is. And seeing that there's no one wishing to speak, I'll close the public hearing. And I'll hand it off to the council, and you guys can deliberate on this.
Question? It has volume one and two, and I suppose I should come down and look at it sometime. But it must have more than just Hanson Ponds in volume one and two.
Yeah, so the Hazard Mitigation Plan is for the entire Kititas County. And that plan is volume one. And then all the formal annexes into the plan is volume two. Clayellum being one of them, the city of Ellensburg, I believe the city of Roslin, anyone else who, they had to actively participate in the process and, you know, submit a letter like you did in 2018. So it's 500 pages. And we have a binder printed out in the other room for anybody who wants to take a look at the hard copy. I also have it digitally at a link if you want to see it.
But the real item is--
There's a lot.
So we do this so we can do maintenance to save our intake.
And be eligible for other FEMA funds.
Yes.
We're not, and, you know, another part of it is there's grant money that we tried to get last year, working with the Kititas Conservation District and Rose Schreiner, who's now with Critee, to get Hazard Mitigation Grant, HMGP, Hazard Mitigation Grant Plan, I'm sorry, I forget the name. But that was based on the level of wildfires that we saw in Rya Grass and in the Jolly Mountain Fire. It made eligible over a million dollars to the county. And then it could be, you can apply for different grants that would help you prevent wildfires in the future or prevent disasters, all the way down to erosion, like the things that Brian was talking about, about protecting watersheds before or after wildfires. This all makes our eligibility possible. Now, while FEMA already said, you've got this money coming, we don't want to get down to the 11th hour and say, oh, by the way, you need to adopt this plan in order to get the money. And by state law, we have to have a plan anyway. And this is our, this is adopting our plan, but it's called the Kititas County Plan.
And also, this will help us with our improvements for the Hanson Pond Park. Because we can use this for an in-kind.
Stephen?
I remember that we adopt resolution 2019-014, formally adopting the KCHMP.
All right, you guys are, who's going to get the second? Anybody? You got, all right. You got, you got age, age, that's all right. Okay, move to second to adopt resolution 2019-014, adopting the Kititas County Hazardous Mitigation Plan. Questions on the motion? If not, all in favor with aye?
Aye.
Close? Okay. So we'll go down, there's no unfinished business, we'll go down to new business. And we have now Clayellum Pines West Division III final plat. And Lucy, again, will walk us through that. There's no public hearing required here, it's simply a council decision.
Thank you. Okay, so this, the final plat, okay. So normally, subdivision process is a type four application, meaning it goes through the administrative process and then it goes to a hearing before the planning commission. And then it comes for the final hearing deliberation decision by city council. In this case, because it was part of a development agreement, a development and annexation agreement for this property, it is, in the agreement, it was negotiated that this would be a type two process. A type two is administrative with just a public notice that the application was received. So no comments. Also, there was no SEPA renewal or anything like that on this project because SEPA was done as part of that annexation and development agreement process. So it wouldn't have made any sense to bring it and open it back up for public comment because all of that was completed around 2014-ish. So I'm giving you a little bit more information than I would normally give you for a final plat because you didn't see the preliminary plat. We did go through a final plat process for both-- We did go through a final plat process for both Division One, which was Frankie Lane, eight homes, Division Two, which was a few other streets and the built homes that you're seeing on the ground right now. Division Three, there are no homes built, there are roads built and then kind of the new development as it's moving westward towards the transfer station. So, the final plat process, the review from council is to make sure that the conditions for approval from the preliminary plat are met or adequately bonded for, because it's a financial decision that has to come to council, regardless of whether or not you saw the preliminary plat in this case. So, you have a staff report, again, it was abbreviated, and there was a note in the staff report that we had a paper copy printout of everything, another close to 500 pages because it included all the applications, the preliminary plat approval of all the conditions, you know, all the drawings and everything. So what I gave you is an abbreviated, very abbreviated portion of that with this, does the staff report cover page, who, what, when, where, why? And then the background information and do they meet the conditions, a couple extra conditions, and then the bond document. Chad Bala is here, is representative of the developer and he can answer questions as well as I can, I mean, in addition to me answering questions, better than I can, sure. And this has all been reviewed by staff and the civil engineer, Ben Anan, and promoted to me to promote it to you. So the engineering firm that we work with, HLE, they feel that this is adequately bonded for based on previous work that they've done and what they're proposing to do, that it includes the adequate amount of funding that would be required if they left and we needed to build it ourselves. We would have the money to do that and that's the reason for the bond. And then the bond sits in the bank and then it is not released until the punch list, checklist is gone all the way through and everything is accepted by the city of the quality that is required by the city sometime in the future. The final plat is what allows the developer to sell the lots to the builder to start building the homes.
So are we only approved, you're only asking us to vote that we agree there's enough bonding? Or are we voting on how it's laid out? What are we saying? What are we doing?
What's that?
What are we doing?
Right. So the, the final plat process is to ensure that the conditions from the preliminary plat have been met or that they have been adequately bonded for. That's the reason why it comes to council, those two reasons. The preliminary plat was already approved by city staff. It is not the layout, none of that is part of this discussion.
Mostly that they provided the bond.
And something that, you know, something that did come up in the last approval of the final plat was the layout and, you know, the conditions of the development agreement. The development agreement is done and that's not something that we can reopen. Density, all of the things that were agreed to in that agreement by people that might not be the same council, that's signed, sealed, delivered.
It may be remiss in my review of these documents, is there an actual amount of that bonding?
Yes, and so it's, if you flip through your packet, there's the yellow page, that's, it starts talking about it there. It's, it looks like it's for $495,966.74.
Okay, and then to be clear, your recommendation is that we approve the final plat, which is subject to bonding and adherence to the four conditions on page five and six, did I read that correctly? So you're, so, so we're still, I mean, we're still holding to those conditions. The bonding is obviously a type of insurance, but that's the recommendation that you asked.
Yes, and the conditions are, the conditions within the preliminary plat and the additional conditions that are listed here.
The, the, on four and six, correct? The number four that is, there is point number one.
A, B, C.
So A, B, C.
With four conditions.
And then, and the fourth condition being the prior to the finalization of Wasdott Intersection Plan for Approval for SR 903.
Yes.
And being drive.
Yes, and if you want to know, and I apologize, it was, we kind of talked about how to present this because it being such a big document, that's why we gave the option of reviewing hard copy or online. And so I can go in and open up my file and I can show you on the screen what the preliminary plat conditions are if you're interested in seeing those, because they're in addition to this. But basically, it's going to be anything that was bonded for, so it's like, you know, you're going to build the road to the quality that the city demands and you're going to make sure that there's fire access and you're going, I mean, it's, it's the basic.
Infrastructure.
It's the basic infrastructure. And those conditions are also, many of them are also straight out of the development agreement as just reiterating some of those. The additional conditions here are just what are kind of part of the final plat process.
That's a good question.
So this phase is going to be looking essentially exactly like phase one, phase two, this is just the third phase and we have the bond set up to cover the costs, including the light that's going to be out there. So nothing's going to be different than the other two phases.
Well, in that, nothing's going to be different in that it's going to be built out and it's going to be a community, but the layout is different. I'm going to open it up real quick here, I'm just going to open it up so you can see the.
And the intersection plan, is it, I mean, it's another, it is another one that is independently considered by Wasdott? No, they're not like, oh, you build two other ones, okay, they don't, I mean, these are nice.
You have to look at each one.
Yeah, they look at each one as an individual project.
So the types of houses will be slightly different, maybe the spacing is different? The density might be different?
I mean, it's pretty much, yeah, I mean, it's pretty much the same, it's, it's just, I'm going to show you a layout, this one.
We can have.
Yeah, and Chad can come up while I'm looking for this, while I'm looking for this, you can.
We don't get to vote on that.
I know.
This is more informational as well.
Good evening, my name is Chad Bala, here at Design Group, layman consultant, Gillock, sixteen six, now in Washington. What's that?
Six six six.
Sixteen six. Don't do that to me. Okay, yes.
Sounded like that.
Yeah, I just like to reiterate and support the staff report by your planner Lucy Temple. It was a long, arduous process from 2011 to the final approval of 2014. We went out for two SEPA's, did an addendum to the SEPA to revisit some critical areas, historical issues on the site, you know, historical means people where they dumped their garbage. So it was kind of a wonderful idea that we had to itemize and stuff. And yes, that whole process went through for approval of 150 units with a mixture of single-family residential access off of 903 and some multi-family, 48 multi-family units. So, we went through that whole process, approved the development agreement at the same time of doing the annexation and the rezon to a plan mixed use to allow those types of uses to occur. Let's see what else. We went through a water assignment agreement, we transferred, I think it was 6.9 acre feet of water to the city that's put in trust, it's in agreement that if and whenever the city needs to use it, they can use it, it's the city's water. We've, as of right now, your approval of the final Mylar is just not approving the bond, but also approving the final plat and that's what the signatures are for. We have constructed up from the existing homes, the next two roads, and I don't know if you can point the next two roads.
So this is just the overview?
Right, I can kind of give you an outline.
Yeah.
That's, right where her cursor is, is Frankie Lane, then I think it goes Perry.
Division one.
Division one, and then from Division one to the next dark line is Division Two.
This is the dark line right there.
Right there, that's the boundary for Division Two. And then Division Three starts there, going up towards, up to the power lines. And what we have done now is, is we have infrastructure in the ground going all the way up through the power lines out to the west end of the property, water sewer. If you can kind of, there you go, that's a good one. As of right now, we also have interest on lots 79 and 80 to meet our multi-family requirement in the development agreement and if I get, if things work out good tonight and I record tomorrow, we'll close for the first multi-family unit complex on 80. Pavement is up to in between lots 72, 71, 67, 68. We stopped there in between 72 and 73 property line. We weren't meeting enough, we didn't have enough time to keep moving forward, so we've decided to finish the roads, finish the next road and pave come springtime. That'll give us an additional time to get the approval from Wasdott. The intersection plan is in, has been in the works with Wasdott for quite some time. But we're pretty confident we'll get that. And come springtime, we'll go ahead and get the top course, get everything built up and then go ahead and do the paving to the rest of that. So that is Division Three from that dark line all the way over for that. If you can see, the upper portion, track OS two is a continuation of our open space track, that's an open space requirement from our development agreement. And we will continue that into Division Four, which is on the other side of the power lines.
And these diagonal lines roughly where the power lines are.
Yeah, those are the power lines.
And then, just to orient you a little bit more, on the north side would be Crystal Creek and the Coal Mines Trail and the south side would be SR 903.
Right. The buffer from, you'll see on there to the right of track OS two is 75 feet. If you took the time to read the 500 pages of development agreement and critical areas requirement was a 60-foot buffer from the wetland and then a 55-foot buffer from the Crystal Creek. Might be reversed. We went ahead and designated a 75-foot just to make sure that we were doing that. All the permits, forest practices, stormwater are all on file with the city plan. I made sure to get all those permits done as part of Division One, so I have to keep on getting permits as Division Two comes on and Division Three comes on. So, that's what's in front of you for approval of that lot now.
Sure, is there any connection to the Coal Mine Trail?
So, I don't think I have a, if you want to go to the overview of the whole project, that'll show Division Four. So, in our development agreement, we had, can't remember his name, but we had a horse park representative also. The gentleman's name is on.
Howard Carter.
Howard Carter, that's right. And we have a, we didn't want to eliminate the ability to do a trail down that slope that would somehow get to Crystal Creek and figure out how to cross Crystal Creek to get over to the Coal Mine Trail. So, the language in the, in the development agreement is, is if and when we decide or owners decide to do that, the trail has to be kind of flagged out. All the approvals have to come to the city to get everybody's buy-in on that to make sure it's done appropriately and right and crossing. Now, we had an original plan for the far western boundary, we had an original design back, I think in maybe 2010, working with the horse park through a compass, we had a design for a horse park crossing from the horse park final three and up that far, farthest western boundary. And then coming down to where, you know how it slopes down into the creek underneath power lines and maybe get across him there. We are still, the condition says if and when we can figure out a horse park crossing along with the trail, we are still open to that. And that may come into play because that aspect has kind of risen to the top recently. So that's, what's in front of you is Division Three up to the power lines. Now, the future division, you know, I don't know if you're kind of wondering what's next, and I might as well just explain this to you. What's next is that site next to the transfer station and on the other side of the power lines. And as part of our development agreement, we are required to get with ecology, new soil samples, boranes and so forth to understand what to do with that existing coal site that was probably dumped from the other side of the creek over somehow. That goes into some history, I haven't figured out how to do that.
That's a good question. How in the heck?
Yeah, I don't know. But, you know, DOE came out, we did a site visit probably two months, maybe two and a half months ago, DOE is regarding hazardous material and stormwater. We looked at that, I now have a VCP, a voluntary cleanup plan application that's in the works with ecology and a proposal on how, what we do with that. One of the items is a cap that's separated and cap it, which ends up meaning we get an environmental covenant on that property and that tells us what we can do on it. So anyways, that's the future, possibly horse trail through that area and so forth, maybe some story.
But in the plat area, there is no access to the.
Not right now unless, unless there's some real big interest, trails in the open space. Now, we have pathways, because the pathways were an agreement in order to deal with snow removal issues regarding curved gutter sidewalk. So we have a five-foot path.
Pathways like sidewalk.
Like, yeah, yeah, paved sidewalk.
So the development agreement also says where topographically feasible.
Yes, it does.
The developer may put in a trail that goes down to the Coal Mines Trail. And if you, if we were to pull up the LiDAR or the hill shade on this, it's, this is a very, very steep slope down to the creek. And so the really, the only place, if you, if you wanted to have a gradual, you know, slope down to the trail, it would be in Division Four, which is along, underneath the power lines. And that's kind of how people get down there now. Otherwise, you're looking at doing maybe like a little switchback trail down a very steep slope.
Yeah, and, and our agreement to that language is we didn't want to eliminate any access or possible future access to the Coal Mine Trail, but we figured that there was better people out there to figure out how to design a trail, so.
Although, at some point, oh yeah, no, I know, I know, I usually don't believe that. At some point, there will be, have to be some way to get across that creek. But there's other players that are coming along too that probably that will be involved besides the horse park and some of the stuff we saw tonight. There's a lot of people that would like to see that happen.
And we are.
And you're willing, so we'll, we'll definitely, we'll definitely work on that. Because right now, people have to, well, sometimes you can't walk across, there's too much water or else people are just driving through it. So, it'll be fixed up.
And that's, and that's exactly what, to reiterate what Lucy mentioned, is that the original horse park trail went along that western boundary and then came across the top of the slope and then zigzag backing down to where everybody rides their four-wheelers across anyway.
Yeah, that's right.
Figuring that was the best slope on both sides, the possible.
That's right. Yeah, that's the logical place, for sure.
I don't know if people like the power lines above them, but it's a good spot.
Well, so since we're talking about all this, though, what, how, I missed it, but isn't there some sort of agreement too with the, since we're all here, a transfer station or road?
We have an internal agreement to continue water and sewer, actually sewer all the way up. We've stubbed out water just to the western boundary and we've been working hand in hand with the city.
Yeah, that's right.
Kiddees County Public Works and the transfer station on, more than just the water and sewer, the water sewer up.
Yes.
But the second thing is, is the transfer station has an issue with queuing and traffic backing out.
I thought that would be good for you to explain a little bit.
And Patty Johnson of the Kiddees County Solid Waste and I met with Jacob Prilichak out at Wasdott reviewing our existing intersection and talking about an access point right there at the west boundary of our property and the county's property that could possibly work as a loop access. You know, maybe access is coming in that way, right through those trees where the cursor's coming in on county and on part of our property and then looping out that way, which solves a big issue, not just for the county, but for the local citizens of Claylawn and Rockwood and so forth using the transfer station.
Because they won't be queuing up on 903.
Yeah, and we're willing to donate our property and. and if I, the last discussion was, the county was willing to do some design work and so forth. So we're still working through those.
That's, that's in the future, so.
It worked good because the meeting with Wasdott was very beneficial in the fact that the solid waste transfers, Kiddees County is going to put that in their budget for design and construction for next year. So there is a question on maintenance. Because we're on a property line with private property and county, and what's the best way?
City and county.
Yeah, yeah, city and county.
You can see a lot of traffic on that road, right on that picture.
Yeah.
They're all waiting to get into the transfer station. For the school.
Okay, well, so then, that was a little more of an overview than what you're accepting tonight, but it kind of gives you the rest of the picture, you might say?
And I did pull up the preliminary plat decision document, which was issued some time ago. This would be the first part, whether or not the conditions of the preliminary plat were met or adequately bonded for. So if you want, I can just quickly, not, not read them, but quickly just hit on the, what they're about, or we can just skip over. Because you've had a chance to review. Thought I'd have a chance.
I'm good, I'm good.
Can I ask you something? Make a motion. I guess the Cleal Plains West Division III final plat had requested approval, the mayor and staff to sign the final LiDAR for the plat for F-P-L-A-T-2019-001 for Cleal Plains West Division III.
I'll second that.
That's what.
Okay, move to second to approve the Cleal Plains Division III final. Questions on motion? If not, all in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Now, we'll go to progress report by our city board.
On the layer, council members, this is just a progress report, or progress payment for DJV construction, which is the water sewer extension that they've been performing on. This is just a progress payment, they're still not complete. They're currently on timeout mode, waiting for the PRV valve to show up before they can finish construction, so.
I make a motion to approve the progress estimate number two. It's only 18101C.
Move to seconded. Oh, boy, move to seconded to authorize their progress estimate number two. Questions?
So how much remains after progress estimate number two?
Since the PRV valve, a lot of calculators, lots of zeros, all right, couldn't honestly tell you 100%, I know there's still at least 85,000 just for the, yeah, PRV valve. And I know there's still at least 20, I think it's almost 30,000.
Like we were talking, there's more work to get done.
What's that?
There's more work to get done.
Yes. But the PRV valve, yes.
Any other questions on the motion? If not, all in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed? If that one's approved. Any other committee reports?
The lodging tax committee met this week and will be reviewing personally our, will also be reviewing in the consolidated process. So we'll have, we'll be bringing you more results of that. It's a long, arduous month of review and paperwork and et cetera. Also, the cemetery committee met, welcomed Preston Weaver to our ranks. And we made a lot of progress toward what we'd like to see changed in ordinance form. We have some pretty old ordinances that need to be brought up to modern times, especially in light of the state laws that have changed concerning the composting of human remains, et cetera. So we hope to have laws that are compliant and also that will memorialize in code policies that will allow us to become more solvent. Right now, we're running in basically about 20 grand in debt to our general fund. You know, the general fund is subsidizing that. And we'd like the cemetery to pull it something. And also, and also, times have changed in how people in turn, bodies have changed. And we'd like to update the code to reflect that and offer, among other things, grave burials, which we've talked about for a long time. So we're working on that, I should say, Kathy's working on that and legal. And then we'll have something hopefully within a month or so that we can present to you. Orance change.
Okay. Any other?
Parks and Rec, we had a cleanup at the dog park on Sunday. We had a fundraiser on Saturday, which I haven't heard any of the results yet. And this week, we're going to have the STEM kids from the middle school going out there to look at the park and they're going to be doing some planning for us. That's what we've got to go on.
You're going to have the middle school go to the new dog park?
We've cleaned it up.
Oh, you have, okay, okay.
We did that Sunday. We did that Sunday to make sure it was a safe place for kids.
Great job, great job, you guys.
And brought out a lot of trash and other things.
It's awesome.
And. So probably, what's today, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday or Friday morning, first period, the kids are going to go out there.
So good.
Okay. I don't know, what do you think?
I'm going to move it here.
Well, I don't know, do you want to vote on that?